Oh, I've had a hundred and two fever and sick all weekend.
That doesn't sound very good.
Have they got him on the menu now?
I think so. I don't think of a safety one, whatever is at 1:30 night.
Yes. It's coming. Things will be much better, it's coming.
Jackson Hole wasn't very nice, but we were pretty much no, I mean, visibility up there was not very good all week.
Really?
Yeah, we took a, I think, really neat tour and stopped off something very educational.
We're a donkey.
Yeah. I could get him up the stairs. Darn it, darn it.
They like to climb on here.
I fear do you leave too much hay?
Well, that's true. Haul them out in the grass.
Yeah.
Wonder if it's still a state statute. Used to be when I went to college at Bozeman, there was a state statute that said if I rode my horse to school, they were responsible for its uptake during the day.
And really?
To feed and water it up.
Interesting. They add so many that don't take off suddenly all at once.
Well, I used to be around Cody, Wyoming. There was a statute that said that any man over age of sixteen must carry a firearm or self-defense.
Really? Come on, let's go down. Good afternoon. We'll reconvene. And it looks to me like county safety plan committee members. Come on up, Scott.
Well, and I didn't ask Mike or Brian to come because it's really just for us to go ahead and approve the memo and approve the appointments.
Okay. Since Mr. Flyner left, we've been without a safety coordinator and felt like it was very important. So that's why this is on the agenda. We have asked Mike Meyer and Brian Hohn to head it up and Scott as vice chair of that committee.
And the clerical help is Tammy Rouser.
Right. And here's a memo that we're going to send out to the department heads, the three of us. Broadwater County is updating its county safety program. We will have a kickoff meeting on Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, at two thirty in the commissioners' meeting room in the basement of the courthouse. Meetings will be held on a monthly basis. At least one employee from each department will need to attend and share information with their respective departments. Each meeting should last one hour. Brian Hohn, Mike Meyer will serve as co-chair and Scott Dunnings will serve as vice chair. The safety program assistant will be Tammy Rouser. Brian, Mike, and Scott will serve as the safety committee to review work complaints and perform, pardon me, other related duties. We care about you and want to keep and help everyone be safe and healthy. Avoiding an accident not only saves Broadwater County money, it saves you injury, short and long term, and saves you money in sick and vacation leave. This is a joint effort. Thanks. So I would entertain a motion to put Tammy in as their secretary.
I will make that motion as well as add Brian and Scott, or Brian and Mike as the chairs, Scott Dunnings as the vice chair, and approve the memo on the monthly meetings to begin May thirteenth.
Okay.
Thank you. November thirteenth, where did May come from?
I don't know.
I want to go back to somewhere.
You know, she sat there, ate lunch right beside you, so I don't know where they, I know what she had.
What, what did you drink?
She didn't. That's the problem. Did you second that?
Yeah, I'll brief. I think, I thought we already had Tammy. We talked to her the other day.
We talked, we just have to formally do that. Okay, it's removed to the second and then we hire Tammy Rouser to be their assistant. Brian Hohn and Mike Meyer will serve as co-chairs and Scott Dunnings will serve as their vice chair. And then approval also for this memo going out to all the department heads. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried.
While we're doing the tech, the safety board, can I make a motion that you go ahead and appoint Nicole Brown as the tax appeal board secretary, make that official as well, this under item three seven?
Yep. It's removed to the second and then we appoint Nicole Brown as tax appeal board secretary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried. A letter from DNRC. Dairy Lane enclosed two original planning grant agreements for signatures. Please have both signed and include your federal tax ID number or indicated and return both to me for execution by the Department of National Resources. If fully executed, copy will be returned to you and completed. You may call me and give the number with questions or concerns you may have. Respectfully, Pam Smith, Program Specialist.
And that is ongoing, but just for the sake of clarity, I won't let me sign.
Yes, it is ongoing. It's removed and seconded then that we sign, pardon me, the Broadwater County Deep Creek Restoration Plan Grant Agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried.
Are we done with the safety stuff?
Who's that?
Are we done with the safety?
We are. Tammy, slide.
Is, is that the FEMA grant application or the other one?
Other one.
Does it spell out? I've seen one. Can I get a copy? Does it spell out in detail what they want to do? I wonder if it's the same one.
No. And you weren't here this morning?
No.
Uh-uh. And you and Carol both, I think, oh, and Hugh, were the only ones that weren't here this morning. We passed a policy trying to follow Robert's rules and no questions during the meeting. We'll do questions before and at the end, so trying to keep it organized. Ann, would you put the federal tax ID number in there?
Mm-hmm.
And send it out?
Yes, please.
Oops.
I don't know if you're concerned that's for a hospital CDPG application.
Will we read the motion to the attorney? I've got two claims in the amount of thirty thousand, twenty-three dollars and two cents.
I will note that we pay those approved claims.
It's removed to the second and then that we pay the approved claims of thirty thousand, twenty-three oh two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried. I have payroll. The amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-seven cents.
I'll second that.
It's removed to the second and then that we do payroll of one hundred and sixty-nine, six, eighteen, twenty-seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We have a petition for road closure or abandonment on Wiesel Creek Road in Winston. We'll make a copy of this and put it in Dana's and then we'll schedule a public hearing.
Is that part of Wiesel Creek Road, is it?
Yeah, Wiesel Creek Road, eight north, one west. It's between sections eleven and twelve.
Towards the end of the road, I'm assuming, huh?
I'm thinking it is. It's the southernmost thousand fifty feet between sections eleven and twelve. Well, then it turns east between sections twelve and thirteen, which is just under seven hundred feet. It says Eastman is no longer of interest or used to the dominant property owner to protect the integrity of the dominant property and the serving property. We need to put, schedule a meeting of public hearing.
Okay. Two weeks, twice in the paper? So that would be November eighteenth on that extension. I am mistaken. It would be the next one now. So that would be Monday before Thanksgiving, November twenty-five.
Thanksgiving's holiday, I should.
Yeah. Ten thirty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think half the night should be fine.
Okay.
We got a contract from Montana Department of Transportation for highway railroad crossing signal and surface project on Indian Creek Road. It does not cost the county any money. The state and railing, as you do it. We just have to prevent, provide flaggers when they're working on it. So we entertain a motion to.
We addressed that about two weeks ago. It's, it's something that's needed for anybody who's driven over that stretch of railroad track, so I'm like, we sign the contract and encourage MDT to get on this project very quickly. And they're anxious too. John Alcott has called about three times in the last two weeks to find out the status of this contract, so they're anxious as well.
Okay, it takes signatures from both of you two. And there's three places.
We should have a second and a vote before we sign.
It's moved in second and then that we. That we sign the contract with MDT for crossing on Indian Creek. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Brendan, we got a letter.
Ready.
From Mako regarding inmate excess medical insurance program renewal. What can you tell us about how's that going?
I'm not going to. Probably haven't had the, maybe ten thousand dollars deducted.
That's good. So no serious claims.
Not going to.
Can you tell me, there's lots of different options here. Do we have mental and nervous disorders too? Would you come and take a look at this and see what we do or do not need to do? Mark it. Please.
And then if you want to use. We just decided what all you want.
What do you think?
We're getting more and more and more metal. Because the, the, and that's, all depends, that's three cents per, per day. So you figure anywhere from five, five to eight per day. Times three cents. Right now, we're paying eighty-one cents a day, so it's going up to eighty-five cents a day.
It's your call.
As, as the expert, I would defer to you. What do we need?
Well, what we don't, what we don't do.
I think we're okay.
I think.
It's eighty-eight cents a day.
You agree with that, Brenda?
Yeah, yeah. She's used to it.
But we are, we're experiencing more and more, you know. I think a little less.
Why is that?
It's, it's just more prominent, it's coming out more and more, you know. It's, it's, it's not that it's more and more, it's just more and more.
Yeah, they're not pulling back on that. I don't think, or they kind of pull back on that.
It doesn't look like there's a deadline if, if Brenda wanted to take that, look it over from the last year's contract, contract, you could readdress next week.
Go ahead and take it and then bring it back next week. Carla, we're ready for you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Get started, yes. John Wright, City Attorney, we'll have to get the floor, and I run it by Chairman Gray to give those to you.
I don't need those. I have multiple copies. This is not the agenda item I requested.
No, and it's.
And I don't have time for that. Do you, you want to discuss it another time? I've made my position on the illegality of these documents that Mr. Wright keeps posting around the courthouse, very clear to him, and it has been forwarded to outside agencies for possible prosecution, so.
Social media access by county employees through the state IT.
Yes, that's the first agenda item I wanted to discuss with you. I just noticed in the past few weeks that apparently the situation, I know from my prior, own prior employment with the state, and when I first arrived here, the state had a very lockdown policy on social media, meaning like Facebook and email websites like Gmail and Yahoo where people can chat, et cetera, use internet chat with friends. And additionally, they had a very lockdown policy on streaming media, which includes websites like YouTube and others where you can watch videos online. Apparently sometime in the spring of this year, they modified that policy and they decided to open the access on the state system. They still have blocks in place and if you ever use the internet to search, you'll notice that sometimes it can be as innocuous as an ad-linked website that will be blocked when you try to click the link. And of course, they have, I believe, very strict restrictions in place to prevent employees from accessing offensive or pornographic websites. However, they did open the access on social media and streaming video and determined to leave it as a department-by-department issue, at least on the state level. And it's my understanding from discussion I had with Miguel, the IT there, that they did send a memo out to the counties who use state internet to advise them of the policy change and let them be aware that if they wish, they could request that those restrictions be re-imposed either on a county-wide level or on a department-by-department level. They just need to make the request and at least one commissioner has to be signed on to that. I want those restrictions re-imposed in my department and I believe that Doug does in his as well. I discussed the issue with Debbie Kelly, who's our HR manager, and we agreed that, and so I'm speaking on her behalf as well, that as an HR matter for the county of Broadwater, we would prefer, and so she's recommending it as HR and I'm recommending it as your initial go-to person for HR weekly issues, that we re-impose the restrictions. In the past, there were, I believe, three employees, one of whom who's actually no longer employed by the county, who had some exceptions and we can request employee-by-employee exceptions when it meets the requirements of their work to need to access. For instance, I'll need to access YouTube in my office. I can continue to upload your meetings. I usually do that on the evening of the night that the meetings occur because it takes up so much bandwidth and I don't want to be doing it at home because I have other business to do, I'm on the internet at home. And that's another good reason, there are a couple of reasons, and I spoke about in the memo that I sent to you, which I'm sure you have an opportunity to review. Primarily, there's, it's an issue of if they don't need to access those sites, which are generally for personal use during work time, if it's not part of their job scope, then it just creates an opportunity to be distracted from the work at hand and it creates another obligation for the supervisor in supervising. And it's easier if we just remove that temptation. There are various studies that have shown with the advent of the internet and the increasing breadth and scope of what's available, the diminished productivity of private and public sector workers. So I think if we, we can just acknowledge that nobody needs to be chatting on Facebook or chatting on Yahoo or any of that when they're working. We do allow in our personnel policies for folks to use their work computers a very limited amount for personal business during their break time. They just won't have the opportunity to chat and you can still do your online banking, things that wouldn't be blocked, but you wouldn't have the opportunity to do Yahoo or whatever work and there's really not, I don't think, a problem with that. Additionally, using media, streaming media in particular, people who listen to music or watch videos online, this does in fact slow the internet connection significantly and that has a significant adverse effect on the performance of internet-based software programs. My office uses an internet-based software program for case management. The clerk and recorder's office, I believe, uses a number of internet-based software programs that they interact with state information, so there's a performance concern there. There's also the concern as to activity that employees might engage in online during work hours and the impact understandable that that would have on citizens. If they see somebody posting on their Facebook page during their work hours, they have to wonder, you know, what are they doing at their job? So that's my first proposal. Again, it's my proposal and Debbie joins me in proposing that the commissioners, and basically you'll just need to send an email memo to state IT and I can draft that for you and just have you CC'd and then have you all respond and say, we agree that we impose the restrictions countywide and allow those few folks who need it for purpose of their work. I, I can imagine that over at the sheriff's department, for instance, one of the computers might need access to Facebook, other social media as part of an investigative process. We certainly have used them. When I was at the state public defender, our investigators had access. Surprisingly, you can get an incredible amount of good information and evidence sometimes by accessing social media as part of the investigation, so they may need an exception. As I said before, there were, there were only three employees who had requested exceptions that had been approved by the commission in the past and I anticipate it would be the same going forward. And you guys did it.
Well, as, as the county attorney explained, we have had identity back through Facebook and we, in the past, have not had access to Facebook. So individuals on their iPhones, correct?
There are all different kinds of smartphones, yeah.
Smartphones, they've had to use their personal phones to access Facebook because we can't use the state system.
I think if you, if you're on the state system, you'll find now that you can. People, some people are unaware that the changes occurred. I actually, when I realized it through the computers in my office, I went downstairs and checked in Doug's and, and they did not expect to be able to access those sites, but in fact, they are now accessible, so they should be accessible to any computer, any Broadwater County computer on the state network at this time. Again, some folks may not have noticed the change, but the change is there and for the reasons I set forth, I think we should request that the change be rescinded with the exception of, and perhaps the sheriff wasn't aware in the past that they could request an exception either for all the workstations in her department or just one so that they can access it when necessary for investigative purposes. That's a department-by-department call.
And I think Nick came to you as requesting that back then.
Two years ago?
Yeah, and he had a certain, he had to list every site then.
Actually, he didn't, he, Virginia Nurt had done it right before him and she had got some kind of terminology from the state that opened up what it was that they could do. Like Carla said, that so, some of the social media, streaming, that kind of thing, but still blocking offensive sites. And he actually, the term, got the same terminology.
So basically, what they do is they take, they do it IP address by IP address, and each computer has an individual protocol address, IP address. And so if, for instance, and my second agenda item is to discuss the potential of a dedicated investigator, the sheriff's department, that it would make sense that that person, if there is one, but whoever, if there isn't, you know, or again, it's up to the discretion of the sheriff, if she wants to have everybody with a computer over there to have access to social media. It wouldn't seem to fall into the work requirements of most of the employees during the course of a given day, but it's basically a department call. Although, as I said, I think it's a county policy, and I did not have, I just spoke with IT last week, so I actually didn't have the opportunity to do any research into how many counties have responded to them requesting that those protocols stay in place or be re-imposed, depending on how you want to articulate that.
Yeah, ours is still set up internally, for Nick's is the only one.
Do others need it?
I don't know, we have our own internally, or you still get the big?
Oh, okay. Yes. Franklin, thoughts?
I think it's a good idea to have the county also.
Those cops will get you every time.
But, no, I think, and their department heads, like the sheriff, where they need department-based.
I would suggest we put out a memo first to our department heads and ask them. There will be some others that step forward with the need to extension and forage, of course, is one. And then, second step to that, after we hear back from our department heads, I would say it would be to follow and go to the state and close it off for anybody else.
I would agree with that. Is that a motion?
Certainly, I'll make that as a motion.
Yes, we'll take it, then we send a memo to all department heads explaining what we got from the state IT, and let them think about who in their office, or if anybody needs access, and let us know, and then we can let the state know. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. We'll put together a memo. And-
I don't know if you have anything for me.
Does Nick, does Nick get up very much?
Nick, when, and probably Jamie, you know?
I mean, do they, you mean very much?
Nick for detention and grants, and then when for his marriage and stuff, and then Jamie's for the investigation and stuff.
Now, do they have their own individual computers?
Yeah.
So it'll be easy to do?
Yep.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if with the, we don't have a short department heads meeting next week, it looks like a pretty short schedule, then we could talk to everybody in case there's any questions or clarify.
That is a very good idea.
Okay.
And they can all walk their individual computers, so?
Oh, they can, okay. So somebody else can jump in on you? Good, okay. And next, do you want to stay for this one?
Yeah. The next agenda item I wanted to discuss with you is budget amendments for my budget and the sheriff's budget to add new positions. That would be a deputy county attorney in our office and an investigator in the sheriff's office. I set forth in the memo that I sent you a very detailed explanation of what we need for both of these positions. So basically, there's no question, I know that you heard from Brenda and Lynn at a meeting a couple of weeks ago where you were still working on the budget, with regard to the numbers that are present in Broadwater County and on rise. And I, as I said in my memo, I did a pretty extensive search and research into the numbers in Broadwater County versus similarly situated counties statewide. And by similarly situated, I mean counties with one full-time or part-time county attorney. And again, as I set forth in the memo, our numbers are in excess of what is experienced in the great majority of the similarly situated counties. There are only three counties which have a similar caseload in terms of felony filings. Didn't get into in detail, other than to mention, we have several hundred a year misdemeanors in addition, and I didn't have the time, because we are very, very busy, to get into researching the misdemeanor caseloads in all of those counties. I am familiar with a few of them, Blaine County, Mineral County, a couple others where I know the county attorney as well, and we are above their numbers on those as well. My understanding is that that is probably in some part due to the change in dynamics of our county in recent years, i.e. population growth and change in the population, but also it is and always will be because we are in a position where we're, you know, we're on the beaten path between Helena and Bozeman and Great Falls and Beale. I mean, we're just sort of this place that people travel through, and there's also a great deal of recreational opportunity here that people are attracted to the county board, and crime occurs as a consequence of that. So the numbers, again, looking back five years, they're consistent, and I anticipate them being consistent going forward. As I mentioned in the memo, in the past, our average of felonies filed is forty-one per year. We exceed forty-one felonies as of today. As I speak to you, I have a half dozen on my desk waiting to be filed, and we have two more months of potential criminal activity to cope with. And I believe I got a call from a deputy this weekend about a felony DUI that hasn't come across yet. So, you know, there's just me to prosecute all those cases, and then there are, or at least have been in my fourteen months here, an enormous number of requests to deal with civil issues. So assuming that neither of those situations has changed, or will change, I meant to say going forward, we really have the basis and reasoning for a deputy county attorney position at least part-time, full-time would be preferable, and I believe we can justify by our numbers keeping a full-time person on, again, in comparison to similarly situated counties. A good example is Jefferson County next door has two deputies and a full-time county attorney. I can give you more specifics about the numbers if you request them. With, I mean, I basically made up a chart, I guess I'll just give you this chart. I have a copy on the computer. This is basically by county. It shows if the county attorney is full or part-time, indicated by a one or a point five, or point, and in some cases, they're three-quarter time, then it shows how many deputy county attorneys are on staff and whether they are full or part-time. And then it also shows whether they're paralegals and legal secretaries, and how many of each in the office. It's not really relevant to compare ourselves to Gallatin or Lewis and Clark or Yellowstone or other large counties. Irrelevant comparisons to counties, again, similarly situated to us. And then related to this request, I think, hand in hand is, I think, what has been a longstanding need to have an investigator. It's my understanding that there may have been one way in the past, historically, yourself. I know that there was briefly, on the Nav situation, an investigator, and that person was housed in county attorney's office. As I pointed out in my memo, I don't have any preference, and as regards space, we really don't have room. If, especially if we are approved for a part or full-time deputy, we just don't have room in our office to house that person. We could try to house them elsewhere in the courthouse, but I think that if there's room to squeeze them in Brenda's area, that, it makes more sense. It would be primarily a law enforcement person, and ideally, they're a person who is trained as a law enforcement officer, capable of carrying a weapon and conducting arrests as necessary. I indicated only that I'd like to have the opportunity to share supervisory authority over that person, because the work they would be doing would be so much related to the successful prosecution of criminal cases in county, which is obviously handled by my office. This would be a person, I think, who would be, for instance, available to step in at pretty much the first hour of a major investigation, whether that's into child rape or the town homicide, a serious case like that, and then also available, so they would take the lead on cases like that, and then provide follow-up investigation when it's necessary on cases that are handled by the regular sheriff's deputies in the course of their duties. What we're seeing is just an inability for them to do some follow-up investigation when it's needed. Once the evidence comes to my office and we determine that the follow-up needs to be done on this, that, or the other, and as I said in my memo, I don't believe it's a lack of willingness, I mean, they do the best they can in the ability, within the limited resources available to them, essentially, and then Brenda's talked to you about this exhaustively, we have most duty shifts, one person on at a time, right? Yeah, okay. So, you know, it's hard if you're the person getting a call that there's a crash, or a citizen complaint of a potentially DUI driver all over the road, you have to go take care of that, and your shift can get filled up with things that are happening today and leaving you very little time to follow up on, you know, finding, tracking down a witness or getting a statement from somebody in a case that you initially investigated three weeks ago. Unfortunately, the way the rules of evidence work, I cannot, even if I had the time, I cannot track down witnesses and take statements myself because I have to present those statements at trial, and you cannot be the foundation for the evidence you're presenting at trial, it makes you a witness. So I have to rely on somebody besides myself to do those kinds of things, as to being law enforcement, that's the way the system generally works, and I think that our department, both departments would benefit greatly from having that person on staff. As I mentioned in the memo, I don't have an idea about specific costs there, you guys might have some idea based on the salary that was determined in the past. Brenda would certainly have an idea.
And that's where I've got a lot of questions, because I haven't received a final budget. And I've been asking for three, four weeks now for final budget.
Debbie's on today, I think.
Mm-hmm. She's on. And I'm not trying to argue any points here with supervisory, if they're a law enforcement officer, I guess my question to you, Carla, if they're being law enforcement, wouldn't they be under my scope of authority?
Yeah, they would. Again, I just, I want to, I think it would be appropriate for there to be some structure in place that allows me to have participation in the scope of authority over this person. It doesn't help, it wouldn't be of any assistance to the prosecution of crime in Broadwater County to have an investigator who refuses to cooperate with prosecutor on the evidence, the follow-up investigation that's being requested, and the prosecutor has no ability to address that concern. So I think it's quite possible for the, I mean, we can design a job description any way we want to, and we can design a job description so that the person has primary supervision by the sheriff, but with the county attorney having the ability to also supervise and direct activities.
And as far as if it were to be both misdemeanor probation and investigator, I mean, whoever it was to be, I guess they would have to understand either they were one or the other.
Yeah, and under whichever had. And I actually, you know, I threw that in there because I know it's something that Ms. Ober and I have discussed a couple of times. I know we were all disappointed to have lost our border grant control grant to fund a part-time misdemeanor probation officer. It was kind of, you know, I threw it in there in the event there was a concern, I think we could keep an investigator busy forty hours a week, don't you?
Oh, I think, I think so completely.
So I don't think that that issue would probably really come up, but it was an idea of, you know, if we found over, say, the first six months, that the person was only really busy three-quarters time doing investigative work, we could fashion some way for them to maybe, and it would be, I mean, I agree that there's more potential for issues because in a community, a small community, you're going to end up investigating in ongoing cases the same people that you might be required to supervise in past cases, and I do agree that it's probably more of a problem than anything, and I don't, I don't anticipate that that person would really not be busy full-time doing. We have very serious cases coming into this office. At least in the time that I've been here, we've filed a half a dozen sex, serious sexual offense cases with children as victims, and those cases take many, many hours to properly and thoroughly investigate and litigate. And there, I could certainly keep a person, an investigator, busy doing, I mean, the ideal for having a position like this would be, we would be able to have the most thorough investigation possible and the most thorough evidence possible to present at trial. So I think that's unlikely to come up, and I just, I guess I want to point out again that we did our best to move forward with the part-time investigator that we've been grant-funded for, but we just didn't have adequate applicants. We had one real great applicant who, for personal health-related reasons, withdrew his application, so we can try to reapply the funding like that in the future. With a deputy county attorney on board, I would have more time to be able to pursue opportunities like that and other opportunities to educate and serve the community, which I mentioned in my memo as another basis, other than just meaning the caseload of the office. But ultimately, if you hire and you're requiring particular attributes in an applicant, you're limited by the small size of the community and the fact that some folks aren't willing to, especially for a part-time position, even if it pays reasonably well, it's a lot to commute for. So I think that was our problem. That was the primary problem with that going forward in the past. And again, I just want to highlight, it's in the memo, I know you've all had a chance to look at it, but in particular, with regard to the position requested in my office, we just simply haven't grown at a rate consistent with pretty much all the other departments in the county. I think maybe the only other one that maybe hasn't grown is the Justice of Peace Office, although I think that the clerk may have gone up in FTL, or I'm not sure about that. But the office hasn't grown, and I think it's supported by the numbers. I was, actually, it was discussed with me by Assistant Attorney Generals who practiced here following John's death, and I was also approached at the winter meeting a year ago by members of Montana County Attorney Association Board about the fact that this county probably needed to have larger staff in order to do a truly adequate job for the citizens of the county, so the idea actually didn't come completely from me. It came sort of from other folks suggesting it, and then we looked into the numbers and it appeared that it was appropriate to request. I know that we never want to spend money, but some things you need to spend money on, and ultimately, the position that I'm going to be in is coming to you and saying, if you don't want to fund a deputy county attorney at least part-time, preferably full-time, then there's going to have to be more civil issues being farmed out to outside counsel and paid for out of the county legal fund. I have a modest, small, limited budget for that within my own office. And/or you're going to need to tell me as commissioners which child rapes aren't important to prosecute, which felony DUIs aren't important to prosecute, and which of the serious crimes that we are prosecuting in our office are, am I supposed to choose not to prosecute? The law requires that that be the priority of the office, and it also demands, for many reasons, that full and adequate time be devoted to the proper and ethical prosecution of cases. And ultimately, if we continue to increase in the numbers as we have over the past five years, this is just an issue that has to be addressed. years, this is just an issue that, that has to be addressed.
Would one secretary be able to do it all?
I've been working a lot with my secretarial staff. My secretary now is somebody who is, in her past experience, she's used to working in very busy civil litigation practices. So I think especially, we've been implementing a very structured system of how to deal with evidence as it comes in and getting it out to defense counsel, et cetera. I think it can be done where, you know, as I talked with you folks a year ago, we bought, using our money from the city for our services, we purchased a case, a digital case management system. We're about sixty percent progressed in getting up to speed with that program. We've got another forty percent to go and another five months of free technical, all-you-can-eat customer service, which is great because they've helped, you know, we've called them quite often. But the idea of the system and why I recommended it in the first place is that it does increase the efficiency. By the time we're a hundred percent efficient using the system, many of the forms that we create, everything from letters to motions, other kinds of pleadings, will be attached to the system. You can, to some degree, auto-populate and create those documents with just minor alterations. So we're working really hard at trying to make that part of the work as smooth and efficient as possible. And I think right now, the other thing to assist is that with, with a deputy county attorney to assist in the caseload, I can do a little bit more of some of the document drafting for my own cases as well as can that attorney for his or her own cases. So that lifts something actually off of the secretarial staff. Right now, it's, we have full-time help in Wendy Richards, our primary legal secretary. And then Brooke Dolan, as you know, is a three-fifths time victim advocate funded by the Board of Crime Control and she dedicates two-fifths of her time to doing assistance with clerical in the office. And, you know, there, there just is a lot of clerical. We're required by statutes to disseminate evidence to defense counsel or defendants as soon as it's received by our office and it's just a lot of, we've digitized a lot of that. We send most of our discovery out now by scanned email attachment. So we've managed to reduce our postal service budget quite a bit. You know, we, we try to be efficient and modern in that regard, but there's no doubt about it that it's, you know, there's a lot of paperwork in the legal office and so they're spending a lot of time processing that paperwork. I certainly would love, I think every office would say, could I work to keep more support staff busy, but at this point, I think we really, because of, in any given week, I have hearings in court, three to five days a week. And just one of the things I've discussed with the city and city judge, justice of peace, is having hearings almost every day over there makes it difficult to find the time, the blocks of time necessary to really dedicate to researching and litigating felony cases and also researching and providing representation on some of the civil issues. So again, an additional attorney would, the way I envision a deputy, he or she would handle the misdemeanor caseload and a handful of felonies. And then I would maintain the majority of the felonies and all the civil representation for the county.
Any questions?
I do have one. And I already know what the answer is, so I want to get public. What do you propose as many comes up?
There, as you know, this year I count, I'm counting on, and we are going to use our contribution from the city to fund a very much needed upgrade in our office furniture, including, and I had already always intended to have some kind of fourth workspace for an intern, et cetera. If we do get approved for a deputy county attorney, that'll cost a little bit more and I mentioned in my memo that we might need a little more for that. In, so in the, so this year it has to come from what we have in PILT or other leftover funding available as a, as a budget amendment. In the future, the eighteen thousand dollars that the city is giving my office for services would in part fund the deputy. My, my office budget otherwise is covered through other, other sources, through the crowdfunding from the county, assuming it would be the same going forward with very minor modifications. As I mentioned, we would need a modest increase to our training and travel budget so that that person could get their required CLEF a year. Every attorney in Montana is required to have fifteen CLEF and we, employers generally provide those.
Is that good?
Per year.
For this?
Yes. And those are generally provided at a very reduced rate by attending one or both of the County Attorney Association meetings, winter and summer meetings. So that would, as I said, it would be a modest increase to the budget for that purpose. And then we have to, it is also the employer's obligation to pay the person's licensing, bar licensing fees every year, which run about, I think, a little over four hundred, if I recall, per year. So again, I, as I set forth, the total cost, and we were, I'm looking at the lowest end that's offered statewide right now for deputy, forty-seven plus, plus fringe as a starting The total cost is approximately seventy and the city's contribution would be modest. However, we can discuss looking at comparable costs with other communities. I can discuss next year whether they should be contributing more than they are. That's not something I want to rely on though, so what we basically would be looking at is around fifty-two thousand dollar permanent budget increase to the county attorney budget every year going forward.
Brenda, tell us about here.
I honestly, I can't because I don't know, with, with the funding this year, we, we didn't make up my budget this year. And I haven't, I'm talking about my budget. I didn't.
Do you have enough work with your deputies for a full-time investigator?
Absolutely.
Well, it sounds to me like your caseload, it seems like it's growing and growing, whether it's because of the population or for whatever reason.
We average what, two, probably two or three felony DUIs a week? I'd say probably two or three felony DUIs a week.
We have a lot. It is, I think, in part, well, a person needs only to read a major newspaper in Montana any week to see a felony, a major felony DUI. It's a community-wide problem, looking at the state as a community. We suffer from having our own community-based problem, which we do, but we are also, again, we're a place between other places or a place where people come to recreate, which often involves being intoxicated. So we have had, you know, very steady numbers on the felony DUIs in the time that I've got here. And I, I don't have the ability to look, you know, really carefully because of the way the files were organized in the past and see what the specific numbers were for that offense, but I think it's been regularly an issue, so.
Do you see a lot of people that need picked up, just that are going through here?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, most of them are, the one, was it last night? It was last night.
I think so.
Yeah, she was going to Helena.
We have had quite a few who were of our felony DUIs that I've handled are people who do not reside in Broadwater County. It's just, you know, I understand, again, I do understand why everybody wants us to spend as little as possible. And I guess I want to say, I would be very happy for any of you or any citizen to come look at how we've, how I've managed my budget in the department since getting here. We've managed to reduce a lot of costs. I, I identified, as I said to the county commissioner a couple of months ago when we were talking about city money, we identified a number of places where efficiencies could be made and I have made them. So we are being very, very, very careful stewards of the citizens' money in our department and I'm proud of that. But ultimately, this comes down to, you know, I myself, having prosecuted here for fourteen months, I get a little scared driving between here and Helena, any time of the day or night because they happen all times of the day or night. I'm always paying very careful attention to the car coming at me in the other lane because we have a lot of DUI here and the statistics are, or the assertions through statistics are, that for every DUI you prosecute, there are several hundred that never get caught that are out there on the road.
Really?
And it doesn't matter what time of the day. Could be eight in the morning, noon, seven at night.
You know, it seems shocking to the average person who doesn't have that, that experience, but we in law enforcement know that yes, you're not, it's not an after-bar closes-at-2 AM problem. We prosecute people all the time and they stop and police people all the time who are, you know, twice or three times the legal limit coming at you at ten AM on Highway eighty-seven. And so, you know, I keep that in mind and I think that any of those folks in the, and we, I'm really happy about the fact that we have a lot of citizens in Broadwater who are willing to call in on their cell phone and report when they see an erratic driver and we get a lot of our DUIs that way. And I'm grateful that they're concerned, that they're willing to report and that they're willing to follow through and come and testify if necessary. It's because of that that we get, you know, a pretty great conviction rate as well. But the bottom line is, you know, that is a problem in our community and it takes time and hours, manpower hours to prosecute those cases and I, you know, I know that folks say, well, oh, here's the county attorney asking for a significant amount of money for additional staff, but again, it, it becomes a choice and do we effectively and ethically prosecute all the crime that's happening here or do I have to start making decisions about, you know, which crimes aren't? And, you know, I, I won't make any apologies for it and I am not, I haven't been in the game as long as some and I just don't believe in giving folks a wet and reckless. Because again, as I said, in my experience and training and education, for the times that people get caught in that position, there are many other times that they didn't get caught. And I think we all see the truly tragic consequences of us not holding folks more accountable. I'm, I'm a supporter of stronger DUIs and I know that the legislature's slowly working toward that. It's just the only way to effectively intervene with people who have an alcohol problem so significant that they're willing to put themselves and everybody else on the road at risk when they get behind a wheel.
Are there any statistics that show what would be the alcohol problems in our state? The rate?
I'm sure there are statistics available with regard to what the dependency rate is. I mean, I think anyone who reads the paper knows, but certainly I can tell you that Montana's, I think, we're second only to Alaska for our rate of driving under the influence convictions, or offenses and sadly, more tragically, death due to driving under the influence. And we're something like twice the national average in our rate. And, you know, there are issues with regard to the number of miles of road there are to travel, but for a state with one of the smallest populations, it's really a sad thing that, that that's the truth about our statistics here.
I get sick when they bring in that car, when the high-betrayed one was killed. I mean, it just gives me a sick feeling.
It is, you know.
Franklin, questions?
There'll be a lot of questions, but we'll decide on this for sure. It looks like we're in a cure and a lot of cost. So it's going to have to sound, these things are pretty close.
Yes, definitely. Laura?
I wanted to talk about money for a second. The, just statistically, misdemeanor probation. We know from other counties, when they have started that, that in, within a very short period of time, eventually that position actually pays for itself in what it saves. We also know that when somebody is allowed to continue working by wearing the bracelet, that they're able to pay their fines rather than just sitting next door. We know when our citizens sit next door, it costs our county citizens money for that. So it would be a plus if they didn't, if they could be, you know, wearing the bracelet, tracked with what they're doing, what they're not doing and allowed to work. So my question is, could we look at potentially, with what you were saying, Carla, like your desire for a part-time county attorney, deputy, maybe even three-quarters time with a misdemeanor probation officer out of your office?
No, that's not possible. It's with regard to ethical concerns. The person who prosecutes somebody cannot also be the person who supervises them in their probation. We would be the ones to revoke and prosecute them for violations. We can't also prosecute them and supervise. That's a legal, ethical problem.
So that office could only be under Brenda's office or it could be another employee?
It could be a separate employee who's not going to prosecute them. The way that the, again, that position that, that we tried to hire for but had no good applicants, that position was, the grant was applied for when Ben Maff was here and as an investigator and planning to service that misdemeanor probation officer as well. He was under John Flynn's supervision, but, but you can't be the person, you know, essentially then any revocations of misdemeanors. It, it really even can't be passed off to the other attorney in the office because we don't really create Chinese walls in prosecution offices very well. The law does not smile on such an approach. In most counties that I'm aware of that have, they're either called a, a court support officer or misdemeanor probation, they usually are housed through the justice court or the city court. But, and ideally, that would be the preference. My preference would be not to have anything, not to have any involvement with the probation of people that I might have to prosecute for violating probation. It just really gets better to keep that clean, black and white separate.
Sort of more so, do you have an area?
Right. I mean, the, the counties I'm familiar with that have done it in particular, I know in Blaine County is a great example of where they got the, they initially got the funding through grant funding and then the position through increased collection of fines and fees was able to fund, fund itself on board when the grant money dried up. And I, I don't believe she's, I know that, that individual is someone that Ben talked with and putting together his application for the initial grant, which we were approved for. I'm familiar with her from having practiced up there. She's not called a probation officer, she's called a justice court support officer or something like that. She does, in addition to doing this misdemeanor probation function, she also provides additional clerical support to the justice court. So it's an amalgam of tasks in that situation.
So same question then.
And I guess I just, before I forget, I do want to respond. This office fully supports and law enforcement here as well, we do get people out on a bracelet or out on twenty-four-seven whenever that's reasonable and responsible. The very few people that we have held next door for any length of time on either felony or misdemeanor cases are because they truly pose a risk to the community and the court has recognized that risk and won't reduce their bond any further than it is at present.
And this is, there's more and more counties doing this and I know this from Board of Crime Control, unsuccessful in other counties, Blaine is one of several. So same question. Investigative officer, if you had one and funded it, say, three-quarters time, I think Ben was looking at extremely part-time, if I'm not mistaken, would that be something that could be housed under your department and this person potentially be a, you know, one-fifth or one-quarter time misdemeanor probation officer and the rest of it investigative with that work?
See, that's, that's kind of a conflict, I think, too, isn't it? Because then you're, you're wearing two hats.
Is that a conflict as well?
I think it can be a potential of... I think it can be a potential of a problem if the person, for instance, again, in a small community, we have, we have a lot of what we call frequent flyers, people who are in the system repeatedly. So if you have Joe Smith on probation and you're the person who's going to, with probationary powers, which are far more extensive than a law enforcement officer's powers on an initial investigation where you have particular Fourth Amendment rights, probation officers have the opportunity to show up at your doorstep and come into your house, day or night, you know, based on court authority because you've already been convicted of committing an offense. So it reduces your right to refuse government intrusion. If that person commits a new offense and has to be investigated for a new offense, different limitations on search and seizure, et cetera, apply. I believe that the officer could be instructed to properly make the distinction, but what we create is a nightmare of potential motions practice and issues before the court because the probationer slash suspect may not understand those distinctions and the relate, it's just a very difficult, it's fraught with problems. We hope that a probation officer develops a relationship that is not adversarial with a probation, probationer in order for she or he to be successful in rehabilitating. It's a different relationship than they would likely have with an officer of law who is investigating them for, you know, a potential serious offense. And again, you know, we're, to some degree, we're victim to our circumstances. We did have funding sufficient for a part-time probation officer and we just didn't have a person who had the, I mean, there are specific kinds of requirements for a position like that, educational and training requirements.
It's a lot easier from our perspective, just looking at the dollars, to think about positions that have funding that go with them, where we don't have to find the money to fund it. If that could make a dent in what the request is, then that would be a plus for our taxpayers. They're getting more services, but they're not having to pay it because the money's coming from a grant and then eventually pays for itself. But if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. So, I'm glad I asked the questions. I'm sorry you didn't give me the answers I was looking for though.
I am, I am as well, but I have to be realistic about what the situations are.
No, of course.
And it is a special situation that we face in the legal world, in law enforcement world with regard to those kinds of issues. I did just want to make a comment in response to the one made by Commissioner Slupka. I realize it's not an insignificant cost, but we are talking about hiring an attorney at law. And in order to get anybody interested in applying to come to our community, we have to offer a competitive wage. And again, as I mentioned, the salary that I'm proposing is at the lowest end of what's being offered to hire deputies anywhere else in the state of Montana, including communities that are not as well situated or as beautiful as ours. It is, if we're going to get someone interested, we have to pay a competitive wage. While forty-seven thousand plus fringe may sound like a lot, it is actually a very low wage for an attorney at law. So, just in county attorney offices, we rely on public speaking individuals who want to serve the community and be involved in the process of holding folks accountable to crimes against the community. I do think that we are more likely to have reasonably good candidates if we, if it is a full-time position and we have the work to keep that person busy. However, if the commission were to instead approve a fund for part or three-quarter time position, that person, if he or she chose to, would have the option of taking on private practice in this community. So that is something to consider as well and I hope that maybe citizens will think about that potential because I know that since Mr. Flynn's passing, there's been a limited availability of in-community legal counsel for private issues. The individual would be limited. I mean, it's pretty difficult to get involved in a lot of paternity family law, for instance, if you're likely to see those people in your criminal cases. So, I don't want to promise the world there. And again, I guess I want to reiterate that the numbers justify full-time deputy, the numbers I've given you here, just by example, and I think it's a very good example, Blaine County is a similarly sized in population to Broadwater. It is also largely an agriculturally based economy. There is a county attorney full-time and a deputy county attorney full-time and over the past five years, their average felony filings have been twenty-three. We have at least forty-one and we're over that this year already. In addition, in Blaine County, the city does not enter into an agreement with the county attorney and the commission to provide city attorney services, so they aren't carrying that caseload, they're just carrying county caseload. There are a number of similarly situated counties that compare and compare far more favorably in terms of caseload versus attorney hours. Ultimately, what it comes down to is my ability to effectively prosecute and work with law enforcement in addressing investigation issues so that they can more effectively investigate really serious crimes in our community. I know that the citizens, I guess I'm going to take that back, some citizens would like to get the most services they possibly can and pay the very least amount for it. That's not the attitude that all of us have. I'm a citizen here too now, a property owner, a person who believes that, you know, a modest, no levy increase to fund our local hospital or a modest additional contribution in order to fund the appropriate law enforcement, that those are things that are worth the modest amount that each individual will pay for it. I feel that way about funding Brenda's department as fully as possibly and obviously about my own department. And as I said in my memo, I want to be clear, this is, this is my recommendation whether or not I file for reelection before March fifteenth of next year or, you know, that it's not based on, this is good for me, this is good for Broadwater County and if it's not approved this year, I'll be bringing it back every year that I'm here. And if I'm not here in the future, I believe you'll see the same request from any county attorney that replaces me. This is something that we really need in order to effectively serve our citizens in terms of holding criminals accountable in our community. So, I hope that we can consider the request with personalities aside and they can really primarily adjust that what the numbers are, what the need is and what the work is that we're being asked to do.
What do you think it's going to cost to your department, Brenda? Just approximately?
Oh, a guesstimate?
Mm-hmm.
Would probably be...
With benefits?
With benefits? A guesstimate would be probably forty-five. That's just a guesstimate.
Would this person have to go to the academy to train it?
If they have one, yeah.
Does that allow them to carry it?
What's that?
That allows them to carry it then, too, does it not? The training they would get there?
Yeah.
Do you have space enough room-wise for a person? Pretty well filled.
We would have to just do some minor...
Switch him out?
Mm-hmm.
Carly, can you send a chart to each of us?
Yes.
Thank you.
In fact, if I could take that one back since I see I did make some marks on it, then I'll send you an email one. And I will also include, because Broadwater wasn't on here, I will include Broadwater as well.
That'd be awesome.
So that you can see what, how we compare.
What does Mar County have?
Granted, they're a lot smaller. Mar County right now is a half-time county attorney with a half-time secretary. According to the numbers that we researched, the average yearly felony filings is seven.
Seven?
Yeah, but, you know, without getting into more specific conversation about it, I will tell you that, you know, there is prosecutorial discretion, that's one of the most wonderful powers we have, the ability to look at a situation and decide whether or not it needs to be prosecuted. I believe, I use mine appropriately, although that's always something that can be reviewed by the attorney general's office if a citizen has a complaint and has been, probably for every county attorney in Montana at one time or another. I will tell you that Mar County is a county where I've heard law enforcement complain about whether things were prosecuted that should have been. I try very hard not to over-prosecute and when it's justified or when I see that there's a problem either in the evidence we have or the person's personal history and situation dictates or supports that we could do a deferred prosecution, we do that. But it is, you know, I want to be clear, I did a lot of thinking about the numbers and the cases on my desk and that are currently filed before bringing this to you. And, you know, we're talking about a lot of felony DUIs, some other drug crimes at the felony level, but there isn't a lot of that here right now. There has been in the past. I think in 2008, there were a dozen meth lab cases, which are felony cases here in Broadwater. So, you know, it does fluctuate over time, but a lot of felony DUIs. And so we're talking about folks who have at least three prior convictions and only they know how many other times that they've been drinking and driving and probably really need to go to the watch program and be in custody and have significant intervention in order to address the safety concerns of the community, the other people who, you know, we have to drive that road to Helena, there's no other road to take. I mean, so, and again, as I mentioned before, there have been a half a dozen since I've been here, serious sex offenses with children as victims and I think it was you, Commissioner Bragley, who asked undershot Mihan about that a few weeks ago. I don't know, you know, those things can come and go in waves. Sometimes it has to do with reporting, whether people are comfortable reporting. Those are cases which have nationwide statistically a fifty percent acquittal rate or fifty percent conviction rate, depending on how you look at it, the hardest cases. They often don't have physical evidence and are, involve an allegation of victim against the denial of the perpetrator. And that's why our legislature has passed laws that allow people to be convicted just based on allegation of the victim if the jury is convinced. Those are cases that some prosecutors approach with an attitude of, if they can find a reason not to go forward, they do. My attitude is if I, if I am credibly convinced, as the law requires that I be, that I can make the burden of proof at trial, I'm going to go forward on a case like that. I believe that victims in our community need to be served, in particular, the most vulnerable amongst us, our children. And I think any of us as citizens would have to have our heads very in the sand not to know that incest, molestation, rape, it occurs to our children at an alarmingly high rate. Statistics show that one-third of people are victim of that kind of crime at some point in their life. And so my office takes the approach that, you know, we're going to prosecute you even if we might not win in those cases because they are so difficult and take a lot of time to properly litigate, to prepare for and to follow through and a lot of working with law enforcement in the collection of evidence. I won't make any apologies about standing up for those victims. That's the job I was hired and then elected to do and it is what it is, unfortunately. Our numbers with regard to those crimes are probably comparable. I didn't do research into the specific, you know, what makes up the number of felonies in each county. I'm sure DUI is across the board a big one, but I know from, just from talking with other county attorneys around the state who I talk with on a regular basis, that sex offenses are also a significant issue. And that basically dovetails with what we see nationwide. Rural communities are more likely to be victim of substance abuse and interpersonal violence crimes than, you know, the kind of more exciting murders or financial crimes or whatever that you see in the big cities more often.
I have to tell you, the reason I asked was because I thought maybe if that was a half-time position, we could share for the second one.
Well, I don't know how, I mean, it's possible for a county to bring another county attorney from a neighboring county in as a special deputy to handle cases, but we have to pay for that as the same, the same deal basically. You have to pay for the expenses and time incurred by that special deputy unless he or she wants to donate it. As an example, I maintained control of a case that I had in the county shortly after I came here. I went up and about a year ago this month, actually tried a felony sex offense case with a child victim and I didn't ask for any recompense, but most of the time that's not going to be the case. So we still incur an expense. Having the staff in-house means you can control the quality of the prosecution and have a shared prosecutorial philosophy and an extensive relationship with your law enforcement, et cetera.
Well, I suspect Mar, with its half-time, shares with Cleveland.
I don't know.
They used to.
I think, I think they still do, do they?
Brenda's still a high-profile official, the state CIV will step in and pursue a lot of investigative work.
If we request this.
But you have to request.
Yeah, and it's not, I mean, it's not really their role to step in just because we have a sex offense case. I mean, that's not really high-profile, that's common in most counties. And, you know, what I see that Broadwater County needs is to more extensively train our law enforcement. They do the best they can with the resources they have and we just, we shouldn't be looking for a solution outside. We should, you know, really be looking to create the solution in-house. Again, I'll send you the chart so that you can see specifically and I'll highlight for you the smaller counties that are comparable to us. So it's really, like I said, not really relevant to look at Castate or Lewis and Clark or counties like that, but we are, we are in the bottom of the pack as far as having adequate county attorney staff to address the numbers that we have. So this is, it's appropriate and it would be, it would put us in line with other counties that are similarly situated, so we're not asking for something that's kind of like extra special that we don't need, that isn't justified by the caseload. And as I said, you know, we're not talking here about one or two cases a year that require, well, we do need outside assistance, we have sought it in a lot of time here, but you can't rather call the attorney general's office and ask them to step in and handle every sex offense case you have just because you're overwhelmed with the numbers in your own office. That's really a solution that the county commission and the taxpayers should be creating out of, a recognition of the need and the desire to address, you know, crime in the community.
Franklin, more questions?
No, like I said before, there's going to be a lot of questions, we have to consult the debate.
A lot of questions?
Yep, I asked mine.
Do you want to set another agenda item to ask those questions after you've had more time to think about them or?
I would like to actually have a working meeting on this subject. I think we need to actually look at some of the structure throughout the county, so I would like to include this conversation with that.
And with both ladies?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I should be able to get a copy of my final budget from Doug?
I think so.
If not, give me a line. If not, give me a line.
Come with me?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Zalder.
Thank you. Commissioner, community update.
As far as what I did this week, we've already discussed it. J-Boos was on panel discussion last Monday afternoon, and that is why I had to leave the meeting early. They wanted somebody to represent Broadwater County. So, that's what I did with HCTV, also present order of Commissioner Andy Henhausen and Ron Ellis, the city manager, Helena and Lieutenant Colonel James Hesterbrook was there for the National Guard. And then we did the same thing Thursday morning at seven AM in Helena, at hometown Helena. And then I joined Dana with the Montana Department of Transportation to go over the Townsend South project just outside of Toston. And that's it.
When did they propose to start that project?
Dana brought that up this morning. That has been delayed by at least six months. They were going to try and let it in January. There's about a three-month delay when they let a project like that before the first manner of construction could get started. It won't be let the earliest until next June. Chances are in the fall, they may get started. So, we don't know what that looks like yet, September, October time period.
Franklin?
Originally, it's going to be let. The bid letting was going to be in December this year, but the Cheryl Town was far behind her deals. Not so many.
They, they aren't actually inclined. What happened is they hired a company to come in and tell them where the easements were, where they needed to get easements. The company missed BLM water easements that actually run in the right-of-way. So, it was irrigation easements with...
That's not BLM, it's BOR.
Okay, BOR. But, yeah, they're, they're actually not behind this. Kind of is a surprise to them, unfortunately.
Okay. Pilt decisions. Is there anybody here to, that wanted to speak on Pilt, Mike?
Yeah, as you recall, I was at your work the second I went to Winston. And they invited me back to this meeting to address this issue.
And these are also in our manual.
Many, the first two items. First item, motorola radio programming software, purchase SASS to finish up the radio program. And second item, double, a community emergency low-power radio station, which has FCC licenses. And it was both of those projects were started by a credit system. Tomorrow, I have an appointment with Lee Gooden. Lee Gooden's out of Three, White House, excuse me. He has worked with the school before. We're going to start down at southern end of the county, look at these different sites and to gather information to prepare our application FCC.
So, I understand, twenty-one hundred, basically?
Basically, yes.
We worked on this at our working meeting last week. I will go ahead and authorize Mike to spend the board. He can go ahead and use the IAM CIP.
Existing budget, last year's budget.
Yep.
Yeah, pretty much agreed on last, last meeting.
It's moved to second indent at the grant, Mike, twenty-one hundred and five dollars, if I'm going to have this quick, regarding Pilt funds.
For those two items.
For those two items to, out of last year's budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carried.
Thank you for your time, Commissioner.
Thanks, Mike. I would also like to move from our working meeting that we moved thirty thousand dollars from Pilt into the Sheriff's Vehicle Fund to solidify what Brenda needs for her new vehicle. And move from Pilt to the Senior Center, the money to pay for the fire suppression as required by the fire marshal, and the money for the stove, and I believe the total was eight thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars.
Yeah, we previously agreed on that.
Yes.